The Planning Commission meeting of August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. Please join me in saluting the flag.
The flag of the United States of America. The republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Vu?
Hey.
Commissioner Langer?
Here.
Commissioner Osborne?
Here.
Commissioner Brothers?
Here.
Vice Chair Assad?
Here.
And Chair Lopez is excused. We have a form.
Are there any communications tonight, supplemental communications tonight?
We do have some red folder, or one red folder item, which is a modification to the ordinance before you, which I believe Ron Vargas, our associate planner, will walk you through.
Great. Thank you. Zoom participants wishing to address the Planning Commission can indicate through the chat feature which item you would like to speak on, and click on the raise hand icon to let the administrator know you wish to speak. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak must fill out and submit a blue speaker card. The Planning Commission can take no action on this date unless the item is agendized. Anyone wishing to speak on items not on tonight's agenda may do so during the public comments. Speakers on items scheduled for public hearing or non-public hearing items will be invited to speak when those items are heard. All public comments are allowed up to three minutes to speak. Now start on number one, May eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, Planning Commission meeting minutes. First item is the approval of the minutes of May eighth and May twenty-second. We are voting on both meetings. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
One second.
Okay, let's vote.
You can just give me a voice vote.
Even though I wasn't here, I shouldn't vote, should I?
No, I don't, I don't believe you should.
If you read the minutes, you're allowed to vote.
Okay.
Okay, I still don't know how to do this.
I'm gonna do a voice vote, because I know Commissioner Langer's computer's not working yet. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Great. Before we start, I must note the customary commissioners to visit. We don't have this case here today, so we'll skip this paragraph. Let's start on number one on the agenda. Code Amendment twenty-four dash zero-one, health and fitness facilities, semi-permanent makeup and temporary outdoor and off-site storage. Staff report, please.
As Director Omar said, there's a couple red folder items on page ten in the resolution. Just some cleanup of some of the, where's definition facilities was misspelled, as well as page twenty-five for the semi-permanent makeup, just to clear that up. And then one last one under the use table. Just cleanup, that semi-permanent makeup as mentioned. Allow me to start. So before you hear is code amendment twenty-four dash zero-one, permitting health and fitness centers less than five thousand square feet by right, permitting off-site and outdoor storage in public institution zones with a temporary use permit, and permitting semi-permanent makeup uses by right as well. So in recent years, gym uses have gone, have grown exponentially popular since post-COVID. With so, we've reviewed our code and analyzed it and determined that by allowing gym uses less than five thousand square feet, it would promote new business here in the city and allow for small gyms to establish themselves here in Fountain Valley. So currently, our code is separated between health and fitness facilities and studios for art, dance, music, photography. Both definitions encompass physical fitness facilities such as gym uses, yoga studios, dance studios, boxing, Pilates, anything similar to that. So over the last few years, the city has processed six applications for gym uses, dance studios, less than five thousand square feet, averaging twenty-eight hundred square feet for all the CUPs processed. Based off this information, we surveyed other cities surrounding Fountain Valley to review the type of permitting required for similar gym uses and fitness facilities less than five thousand square feet. Newport Beach permits them up to two thousand square feet. Anything over two thousand square feet is a minor use permit, which is approved by director discretion. And then they have a separate definition for artist studios for art, music, pottery, so on and so forth. Westminster is a CUP and then an ancillary use permit for smaller gym uses as well. Costa Mesa splits it between physical fitness and art and sculpture studios, and then Santa Ana, similar. So before you is, before you were proposing to change and create a definition for health and fitness studios less than five thousand square feet. This will be small-scale fitness facilities typically accommodating one group of students at a time. So this will be a small gym, those yoga studios, those Pilate studios, things that tend not to exceed three to five thousand square feet, similar to the applications we've processed in the past. So as you see below, this would be the style of gym. We're not talking about the large twenty-four hour fitness, LA Fitness, Crunch Fitness. These are smaller, tend to be private. Private gyms, private training facilities. So in the past, I personally have taken a lot of phone calls, answered a lot of questions about if these types of gyms would be permitted by right or if they would require CUP. So if approving this, if creating the definition, creating the use, they would comply with the standard conditions outlined in our approved CUPs in the past. So this would be noise, this would be hours of operation, a number of classes, minimum distances between classes. So when I say classes, I'm referencing like yoga or Pilates. So reduces stacking, reduces traffic in those shopping centers. Since we're creating that use for those smaller gym facilities, we're also separating artist studios from that previously studio definition. So artist studios would be those photography studios, music studios, rehearsal areas, photography studios. These would still require CUP, and it would be its own separate definition, its own allowable uses within the use table.
So the artist studios require CUP?
Yes. So right now, our, the code requires a conditional use permit for health and fitness studios, which would be again those typical gym facilities, and artist studios, which within that definition includes yoga, Pilates. So with the code amendment, we'll be lumping, or rather, we'll be including yoga, Pilates, any of those studio uses under health and fitness, rather than the traditional art studio uses.
So why we are not, why we are keeping the regulations on the art studios?
It's something we've had in the past. I think for, these studios tend to have performances, they pretend to have large events. So by maintaining that, we can kind of condition these types of events being held at these types of studios.
So for example, I think, you know, the code written many years ago was considering those large fitness centers that really didn't have the small kind of crunch and, you know, the smaller fitness facilities you have now. And so it created a CUP process for those larger facilities. Now the trend has been towards a smaller, more private facilities as Ron is talking about. And we have, we've seen so many of them, we have a set of standard conditions and we know how to regulate them, so we can embed that in the code. So you can go in by right and you're gonna meet these certain specific requirements that over time we've kind of prepared because we know of the impacts and the type of use. In terms of the artist studios, those are a little bit different because you have art, you have music. They make more noise, they're a little more impactful. We don't have the standard conditions, nor do we really get those type of applications much. We haven't really seen any. So we left it CUP, I think in the future, if we start to see that demand, we can come back and say, you know what, we can maybe allow these things with these certain conditions. Right now, at this moment, we weren't prepared to say, you know, music, performances. You know, if you have, you know, a hundred people coming in, you have a performance facility. You know, because for example, you know, my kid's in some sort of music program and then they have some recital for the parents, and then you have a large number of people coming in at one time that you normally don't have, that can be impactful to the parking. And so we weren't prepared to come back and say, you know, let's permit that by right. But that's something if the city or the planning commission wanted to do, you could, you can make that a permitted use as well. We just don't have any kind of standard conditions for those at the moment.
Okay.
Any additional question? Yeah?
Please continue, we'll discuss.
So as mentioned, this would still require CUP moving forward. So the second code amendment would be for semi-permanent makeup. Currently, the city of Fountain Valley, our municipal code defines tattooing as establishments marking or coloring the skin with tattooing, and all furnishings, equipment, instruments, dyes, inks, and other facilities maintained there in incidents such as, such use. So standard tattooing definition. With that semi-permanent makeup is the use of tattooing to resemble makeup, so they're using similar tooling, which includes microblading, which is tattooing technique, which is a small handle tool made of several tiny needles, is used to add semi-permanent pigment to the skin. This tattooing often fades over time, so you'll see customers returning frequently to reapply this semi-permanent makeup. So currently, the city identifies semi-permanent makeup as tattooing and would require a conditional use permit. Often, these semi-permanent makeups are in relation with salon uses such as barber shops, hair salons, nail salons. So salon uses are a personal service and permitted by right in all commercial zones. So you often see these by right uses having to require CUP to operate these semi-permanent makeup uses. So before you is a proposition to separate and create a definition for semi-permanent makeup from tattooing and create a definition, a semi-permanent makeup means a barber and beauty shop business which offers professional beauty services consisting of eyebrows and microblading, as previously mentioned, microneedling, microdermabrasion, lip blush, and similar makeup application materials. This would be permitted by right as a personal service, again, often correlated with salon services and operating in conjunction with. These uses have to be governed by the Health Department and must comply with the California Safe Body Act, of tough, safe body art act, which comply with the standards of a personal service. So that would be the second code amendment before you.
And I'd just add, so what we've seen is that, say, microblading as example, it doesn't go as deep, it doesn't have the same issues as tattooing, doesn't have the same health impacts or is regulated the same way. And so we're comfortable coming back and saying we can take that out of the same rubric or kind of permitting style as tattooing, which is, which is permanent and goes deeper and has separate issues than, than microblading as an example.
This too has been a popular business here in Fountain Valley, as well as the neighboring communities. Over the last five years since I've been here, I've processed five applications for this type of use. And the final one would be temporary outdoor and off-site storage in all public institutional zones. So this would be a, an added temporary use, temporary use, use rather, in these, in the municipal code. Currently, we do not permit off-site or outdoor storage in public institution zones or any other commercial or manufacturing zones without a conditional use permit. This would be a temporary use at director's discretion. With that, they would have to comply with all temporary use standards such as shielding from the public right away, any type of noise that would be created by any type of storage use. And it would be approved via director discretion up to one year, and they can request an extension through the director, and any other conditions can be applied via director.
And just for more information on that, I know we didn't provide too much detail in the staff report. So as an example, we have the future fire station property on Bouchard and Warner, or near that corner. It is currently graded. We demolished buildings in anticipation of the future site, but we're still in design. And we'll need to go through an RFP process once that design is complete for construction, so it's gonna take some time. So it's an opportunity, this present an opportunity to allow for some sort of temporary use, allow the city to lease a property, gain some income while we go through that process.
And that concludes my presentation. City recommends adopting code amendment twenty-four zero-one for temporary use, outdoor storage, semi-permanent makeup, and gym facilities less than five thousand square feet. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners, please?
We have a couple of questions about the off-site storage.
Yes.
So yeah, appreciate the further elaboration, not as much detail in the, in the materials that were provided ahead of time. So a couple of questions. So what are the, the public institutional locations around the city? What qualifies in that, in those zones? So those are primarily schools and city-owned properties.
And if I can add, schools are governed by them, by the state board, right? So we would have little.
We have limited jurisdiction in the.
Charter of schools?
In schools, in school areas. If it's, normally if it's limited to educational type programs and projects, then the city doesn't have any jurisdiction. So it's, it's limited then with, with that caveat to a handful of city facilities? Correct.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so further to that, what are the, I think you mentioned this briefly, but if somebody else wants to do temporary storage, what are the rules for that?
It's not permitted only, it would only be permitted in public institutional zones. So any type of temporary storage, there's, there's code language that allows for temporary trailers, temporary buildings for construction yards such as that, but temporary storage in a commercial area or manufacturing zone wouldn't be permitted.
Okay, but, but with a conditional use permit in those areas, you could? Is that, was that what you said before?
Yes.
Okay. So this wouldn't change anything about what's allowable in the, in commercial zones or other zones?
Right.
Only apply?
Correct. It wouldn't change the current code, only allow for the use in public institution zones.
Okay. I was a little unclear about that point, looking at section seven on pages, pages twenty-five through twenty-seven of the packet. This list, I think, what's supposed to be a somewhat comprehensive list of temporary uses, and we've now added temporary off-site storage yards. I haven't looked at all the tables for every different zone type, but I think it could be helpful, maybe this is a discussion item, but I just, it'd be interesting in staff's feedback on this before suggesting it in discussion. If in item eleven, where we have the definition of temporary off-site storage yards, that we be clear that, that this discretionary approval by the community development director is limited to the public institutional zones. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes.
Any more questions for staff?
I had a question. Mr. Attaboy, talk some, you mentioned something about parking when we were talking about the fitness centers or the, the smaller scale businesses that we were talking about?
I was specifically talking about the artist studios. In terms of some of those uses, you have performances, and so those you have different issues. You may have different issues in terms of parking and those types of things.
Okay, my question is, if you had a smaller scale, but for some reason they had an enormous amount of parking, would we still have any jurisdiction over that, since they don't require a CUP?
So I think the general concept here was martial arts, which we get a lot of applications for and require CUPs at the moment. We needed to pull out of the artist studio definition. And so that's why you saw that martial arts was pulled out, and then you had a new line created for the artist studios. So we needed to pull the martial arts and other things and pull those together for facilities less than three thousand square feet and then more than, or two thousand, whatever it was, three thousand square feet and more than three thousand square feet. So that's why it's pulled out, and then that's why you see the artist studios in red. The intention wasn't to touch the artist studios and photography and all those types, and dance studios and music. It was to pull out the martial arts section of it, if I'm correct, Ron?
Yeah, so again, as Omar mentioned, we received a slew of martial arts, Krav Maga and different types of martial arts businesses. So we wanted to amend the code to allow for these types of uses to be able to process their application without having to go through the lengthy CUP process. Again, these, these uses tend to be less impactful, roughly around three thousand square feet, nothing too extensive. Within the conditions, ceremonies or events, belting ceremonies, championship ceremonies, whatever they may be, those would not be permitted within these small-scale facilities without further review or, right?
I mean, honestly, you know, not too concerned about art and photography. I don't even think you have photography studios that much anymore. You know, there are some art studios, you probably have music a little bit more. That's probably the most impactful of those. We just weren't prepared to go in that direction in terms of if you wanted to permit those, what types of standard regulations you'd have in place, because one, we haven't seen that many or any at all in the last few years, and two, it wasn't the subject matter here. It was mostly just pulling out the martial arts. But if that's the direction the planning commission wanted to go in, I think the next time, because we continually looking at the zoning code and land use tables to see what alterations and, you know, if we can streamline things and make it more business-friendly, we're looking at that. And so we can pull that next time we come before you, but we weren't prepared to talk about it this evening.
Well, I wasn't really concerned so much about that as much as I was thinking about in these shopping centers where we have really tight parking in some of them already. And you have, let's say you take out a dentist office and you put in a small gym where the, you know, the attendance is three or four times. What, is there any factor into that about how the parking might affect that shopping center?
Yeah, so when the, if a proposed use comes in, we would run parking analysis to ensure that they have, they meet the parking ratios for the individual uses. So then we look at each individual use, see the demand for parking for those uses, and then tally all of those up individually and then compare it to the number of parking spaces they have.
If I may add, we're not adjusting the parking requirement for these smaller scale gyms. They would still have to meet the parking requirement for any health and fitness studio.
What about the business that they may be taking over? How would that compare? Let's say you had like a dentist office that only required maybe five parking spots, and now you're gonna put a gym in, it's gonna require twenty-five spots. Would you factor that into the total number of what the shopping centers allow?
Right, so that would, that would determine whether or not they can occupy that space. If the, if that center is able to meet that parking demand, then they would be able to move forward. Otherwise, they would have to find a new location.
Thank you.
I got, I got a question. I think Commissioner Osborne already asked my question, but I have a question regarding the, the CM zone here. I'm do checking on the city website GIS, as well the zoning PD app on the city website. Can I find any CM zone location at all? Do you have any example, location of a CM zone?
CM zone, so that'd be commercial manufacturing, so that could be, sorry?
Go ahead.
Yes, going up New Hope in that area to the right, along the river. That would be commercial manufacturing as well. But they're, yeah, mostly to the east side of town.
Yeah, I understand the manufacturer is on the New Hope and, I think, New Hope and Slater, there are a bunch of things. But they will stay at the manufacturer's zone. So that's why, when I see this one, the, the health fitness center that less than five thousand square feet, and then we can, we then, we can fit them into the CM and the manufacturer's zone too, or they can, they can, they can apply for that, those locations too, or?
Yeah, so that's also, I mean, looking at trends at different cities, they do permit them in, in small manufacturing tenant suites. And again, fielding calls, fielding emails, those are locations that consistently got emails and phone calls about. So given that the area doesn't meet the parking demand, it does meet the requirements for this type of use, and it could potentially occupy that space.
Yeah, that's my question, because if you can fit them there, yeah, that's gonna be, have more parking thing compared to.
The manufacturing zones are the ones typically where you have the parking issues because they were built with a much lower standard. So manufacturing storage required much less parking traditionally than commercial and other types of uses. And so those become more difficult to put in different types of uses just because they, those other types of uses that they consider like health and fitness require much more parking, and so that becomes a little bit of a challenge for those areas.
So and then we, we still allow them to, can, can, can apply for those locations to, to get a gym or anything less than five thousand square feet?
Potentially.
Even the parking is an issue. Okay, I got.
Please.
Thank you. If you know, what's the general hours in the manufacturing zones?
Seven to, seven to five, seven to six generally.
So if a studio wanted to go in there, would they have to match those hours?
Health and fitness studio or a?
Whatever.
Currently, they would be permitted with a CUP, any type of studio. I mean, we've had different type of dance studios and studios operate later than seven, eight P M. I mean, in my experience, working with applicants who are processing an application for dance studio, their demographic are kids, right, after-school programs, so they are operating after five P M. They're operating until eight or nine. This is expressed to us in the application process, and it tends not to be an issue. So if an applicant did want to, unless there was an objection from the commissioner staff, I mean, as I see it now, I would, I don't see any objection to it.
Which is what I expected with the hours of that kind of use. Has this been run by the police department, and did they have an opinion?
It was not, no.
I know in the past, they were very much opposed to that kind of use in, especially the manufacturing zones, when they expect everyone to be out of there by five or six o'clock. So if you have people now in that area who have a right to be there, that adds more burden, if you will, to the police department, to have people where they're not expected to be at night. I just wondered if police had any comment on this.
No, not to my knowledge, no.
Have we taken any, or have there been any applications for conditional use permits for these types of facilities that have been in the, in those zones?
Not specifically in commercial zones, but within crossings that are identified as a more heavily commercial zone, such as near the sanitation district along Talbert. There have been applications for dance studios there, as well as a boxing studio, which PD did provide comments in, in the standard conditions for operating and loitering and vagrancy. So based off of those conditions and comments over the last couple of years, there was no further objections to these types of uses.
You do make a good point, Commissioner, in terms of the hours, though. I don't know if the commission, commission would like to set some maximum hours as a standard regulation to say you have to end by, for, if you wanna, if you wanna be permitted by right, you have to end by, you know, you can operate between these hours and not leave it open. That might be your consideration.
I think that's a question that we might ask PD, if they had a recommendation. I know in the past, they were pretty adamant that they would struggle with people being in those zones where they weren't traditionally.
We haven't, as Ron mentioned, we haven't had that, heard that more recently, but we can check with them after this meeting.
And I, excuse me, I had a question on outdoor storage.
Certainly.
If you can guess, why would any of these uses need out, temporary outdoor storage? For what?
What would any of, which uses?
The uses that are gonna be able to have it by right?
So the temporary outdoor storage would be permitted with a temporary use permit?
I understand.
And it would only be in the public institutional zones. But as Omar mentioned, with the potential, with the fire station coming on soon, that would be a potential site for public, excuse me, outdoor storage?
I would consider that off-site storage, not.
Outdoor off-site storage, excuse me. Outdoor off-site storage, excuse me.
So I'm a karate studio and I'm going to go in a new location, a small location. I could go in there by right. Can I have outdoor storage?
No, no.
So this is, no, so, uh, we're, so the, the temporary storage is for the PI zones for a limited amount and number of areas. We kinda don't think it really permits or is relevant to school districts, so there's maybe two or three properties in town that this temporary use issue is relevant to. Separately, we're talking about, um, in, in the commercial and manufacturing zones as an example, if you wanted to do, uh, normally we get requests for permanent outdoor storage. And, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, but I think normally those are conditional use permit items and those would remain conditional use permit items. And that's typically in the manufacturing zone. In the commercial zone, we don't really allow or want to see, uh, outdoor storage. It's usually some sort of seasonal type of TUP that's, uh, requested and approved for, say, a strawberry stand or, you know, some sales in front of your business, uh, for some event. And so that's what we normally see.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm not sure that the resolution is very clear on who can have that.
I agree with you. The resolution has two subjects that are unrelated. It's about the outside storage of public institutions and this. Let me elaborate a little bit, might as well, we are all discussing it. Or shall we close the staff and discuss it? Are, are you done?
Yes, I'm through with it.
You're going to have the public hearing and then?
Any public, any person wants to talk about the subject? Okay, that closes the public hearing.
Thank you.
So I have a few comments on this resolution. I'm not, I'm not, in principle, not against excluding the gyms less than 5,000 from the CUP. I am against splitting her and trying to define what business is what. And, and we have businesses less impactful than the, uh, gyms. Some gyms operate on music rhythm to exercise. If, if our goal is to enhance the business in Fountain Valley, we need to be more inclusive of all businesses. Like photography is, is excluded, yet we allow a gym? It doesn't make sense. A guy, a painter who wants to paint in his studio is exclude, uh, is, has to file a CUP, but the gym does not? The, we are splitting hers and we are using languages, similar uses. What the hell is that? In codes, you cannot write similar uses or et cetera or this.
So.
We need to be more inclusive to enhance business, not delineate, splitting her between businesses that, that didn't make sense to me. I am pro excluding CUPs, okay, from businesses. But the way we are doing it is like just we selected gyms less than, the criteria here is, is a square footage really, not the impacts. We can write the code that says, if your business has music or, or health issues, then you have to file CUP. You define the impacts rather than the square footage. That's, that's my opinion about the subject.
I see where you're coming from.
I, I like, I mean, I heard that you would come back to us. Why you don't modify it now and come back to us?
If the planning commission would like to modify the language and propose something, then we can take that to city council.
Yeah, it is a little confusing because it, it's really like you're discriminating against a certain group here that have very similar.
For no reason.
Very similar.
So for example, uh, there's a reason why those larger facilities for health and fitness require, uh, CUPs. They, they are more impactful, the bigger you get, they take away more parking, they have some elements that are more impactful to the community, which I don't necessarily want to get into right now. But they, they definitely are more impactful. And so what you see as a standard in zoning codes is, and I've kind of mentioned, uh, like three, three to 5,000 square feet, allowing those to go in. Because as you get bigger, there is more of an issue for the scale. So that's why cities have gone towards this in terms of limiting the, doing it by square foot, totally understand, um, the impacts. I wouldn't want to necessarily do that up here now because I think it requires more forethought than just to say, um, you know, if you, you can do all these things, like unless you have music and other things, because there are, they do have some music and you can do some insulation and whatever else to acoustical treatment. So, um, at the pleasure of the planning commission, this is the way, you know, it's, is, we've, we've traditionally seen it, and this is, I can explain the reasons why, um, but it's at your discretion.
Based on, does anybody wants to add anything?
Yeah, yes, I, I, um, I agree with the sentiment that we are requiring CUPs for too many things. And that this is an improvement on that, but it doesn't fix all of the imaginable ways that we could improve the permitting environment of the city. And I think, you know, listening to staff, I think that's okay. So I, I think the question for us is, do we want to make this thing better for, like, we just approved a Pilates studio at, at our last, I think our last meeting or two meetings ago? And that was, I think, of something where we added very little value as a body of opining on that. So this fixes that much. And so the question is, do we want to let that go forward? And then I think it would be good to look at a lot more things, but also have staff be deliberative about what are all the different conditions and the exceptions and like the things that we really care about as a community to, to govern. So I would, I would suggest with maybe some, some cleanups, I think there were a couple, there was one suggestion I had, there might have been some other suggestion, but let's make the one thing better and maybe ask that the staff come back with some further improvements.
What I may recommend too is that we, we could do a study session and we could kind of talk about these land uses and, uh, see how you'd want to kind of give some staff, give some direction to staff in terms of you want to see something permitted, but with, you know, some additional standards and development regulations. Um, but as Commissioner Langer said, I think, you know, the intent was to make it easier for these because this is what we, we're, we're trying to resolve an issue that we've actually seen as opposed to these artist studios and other things that we haven't actually seen come into the city anytime recently. Like it's not an issue in term, but you've seen a lot of these smaller, um, martial arts and other workout and fitness places come in and on a regular basis. And, um, as, as the commissioner said, staff doesn't believe we're really adding too much value by requiring conditional use permits to those. And so that's why we're trying to address it. It wasn't a holistic, uh, view of the entire, uh, land use table in, in those sections, but it was kind of trying to address an issue and make it easier for businesses that we've seen kind of struggle and paying these additional fees and taking extra three months to get in, uh, for not much value to the city.
Okay, I, I agree with that statement.
I, I think I agree with Commissioner Langer. I think this one's a lot of helping already, uh, based on what I heard from Jet is, based on you guys talked about, uh, the application number, so you guys split them out, uh, up there, the gym. So, uh, but there's some other thing, like I thought is the art studio, like we, I'm not sure how many art studio in our city. I, I, I use, I know there is one, usually one between the, um, in the brew house between the, the Ellis and Talbert. I don't know if she closed that, that studio or not, but those studio, I don't think, they, they require the, the CUP at all. We don't, we shouldn't require those type, the CUP. We should encourage them. You know, I know a lot of city, those are in our eye, they encourage the art studio looming because it's not for adults, it's for a lot of, for kitten thing attending and it end up a vine head lot of art studio right now. So I, I think we, we should, uh, get more study deep and to split them out more so it's beneficial for, for more of the business coming. Uh, we can attract more business, go to our city. So that's, that's my thought.
And what we can do is we can take some of your sentiment from this evening and start making some changes. And during that study session that we have in the future, then we can kind of propose what, um, would make sense to, or what we've heard and kind of incorporate that, and then we can talk about other things as well.
Commissioner Brothers wanted to talk.
Um, I tend to agree with all the statements here, um, but frankly, I, I found this as written pretty confusing. And if you're pulling out businesses that we don't have, maybe they look at this and say, oh, I need a CUP, I'm not going there. Um, just a thought.
So, I, I'd like to say.
I was, so, can you end on that please? So we're, in terms of, what's the confusing part so we can try to fix it?
You are talking about two subjects, the CUP for these small businesses and the, and the storage outside of public institutions. If you can divide the, uh, let me make a motion, I'll make it clear to everybody, just, it's a motion, if, if you don't mind, anyway. I, I'd like to make a motion to shelf this voting today until we have a study session. And the idea behind the study session is to make it more inclusive, what businesses don't need CUP. And the second part is when it is, when we agree to what is needed to separate the motion to the statute into two sections, section A, section B, to make it clear, it's two different subjects. We're not talking about the art studios outside storage, we're talking about different, uh, that's my motion, uh, and hopefully the study session can be done ASAP so that we have input from the community. I don't know, study sessions also. And to make better, uh, business friendly environment in the city. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Could I, could I respond?
Okay.
You had a second before we vote.
I have a second. We can vote.
Before, before we vote, could I make a comment?
Of course.
Yeah, so I think we should approve this now so that the next Pilates studio doesn't have to go through a CUP while we're doing a study session on the larger issues of the code. That's the, the issue I was trying to raise before. We can always come back and undo that or change that, but in the meantime, like, we might have the study session and get like three more Pilates studio CUPs. So, and that's, um, I think you can do this and then we can still do cleanups later rather than delaying the good incremental change that we know that we need, uh, while we try to fix a much bigger set of issues.
Can I ask Omar about, is that possible, you can do that? Like you approved this one and you can come back to?
That's what staff would like to do. I think, uh, we're trying to ease the regulations for certain types of businesses. We also would like to try, in the city council's direction, to staff for, uh, the city owned property that is vacant right now is to try to get some temporary use in, into there, and this would be helpful to the city in terms of garnering some revenue. And so, uh, yes, there's, sometimes we have entire cleanups and that change the entire municipal code or zoning code, uh, and there, we throw a lot of things in there. And this, in this one, we were trying to fix, um, a couple of different things, uh, that we've seen over time, and so sometimes that's, that's what occurs, uh, because we're just trying to fix multiple things. I understand it can be confusing, we're kind of jumping all over the place, but we're just trying to, I mean, we could do three different ordinances and get to the same place, it just adds more ordinances, but that's, you know, it's just, it gets to the same destination, just different vehicle. But in terms of, um, trying to address some of the actual issues that we see currently, that's what we're trying to do here this evening.
Do we have a potential tenant, a gym, to the, to the fire property?
We get requests for those types of uses, uh, yeah, all the time, and we are waiting to engage with brokers to try to get a tenant on the city site until this ordinance is adopted as well.
Uh, changing laws that frequently is not good. And knowing the intensity of the businesses here, how many times we approved a, something like this, I mean, the whole year might be one business. If we make it quick, it's better to write one comprehensive statute, benefits everybody instead of creating confusion in the business around us. This is needed CUP, this doesn't need CUP, no, you're an art, no, you're a gym. I still prefer the motion as it stands, and we have second, but please feel free to object or agree. So let's vote.
Does Matthew want to make a substitute motion?
Can I do that?
Oh, please.
Sure.
Um, well.
Well, you can vote against, because we have a motion and a second, let's, let's follow the process.
He can still make a substitute.
Yeah, so I'd, I'd make a substitute motion to, uh, approve what we have with changes to clarify the issues that were raised. So in particular, making sure that it's clear that the, uh, that the off-site storage is only allowed in the industrial, I'm sorry, in the, in the.
PI.
Public institutional uses, making clear about that and so that there's not this confusion about that. With that, I, I would, uh, with that clarification, I'd be open if there's other clarifications that commissioners would like to propose, I'd add that to my motion. Uh, but I, I, that, that's my motion, to, to then approve what, what's here.